Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's Town Council Candidates Forum. My name is Brad Fogg, and I want to welcome you to this program. It's being sponsored by the Town of Gray and Great Community Television. And tonight we'll be asking some of the our two candidates for Town Council questions. These questions are being submitted from audience members via email and via Zoom. So if you're watching us by Zoom, don't be afraid to send us a chat question. If you have access to email, want to ask a question, please, you can submit that via email. If you have an opportunity to watch this or need to watch this forum being replayed, you can watch it through Great Community Television. You can watch it on the town's website. You'll be able to watch it on Roku TV or Apple TV devices tonight if you don't have access to spectrum timer cable. The forum is going to be comprised of questions submitted by voters and questions asked in person and over Zoom. The forum is being broadcast again over Cable Channel 2. So without haste, we will start. And our two candidates tonight are Michael Bailey of Zachary Drive and Michael Curtis of Marshview Drive. So gentlemen, and we'll start with the mic closest to me. Would you please tell us a little bit about yourself? And later on in the program, we'll ask you to make a closing statement that tells why you're running for council at that time, but just a little bit about yourselves first.
Sure. My name is Michael Curtis, and I live at 27 Marshview Drive here in Gray. And I live here in town with my husband Gary Curtis. And we moved here about five to six years ago. And I'm very excited to put my hat in the ring for Town Council because I think Gray is at a great intersection with both growth and conserving the uniqueness that the town has being so centered in the state. And I'd like to help with that growth and help preserving some of the charm that the town has moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Hey, good afternoon. Good evening, everyone on the audience and on TV. My name is Mike Bailey. Michael Bailey. I live on Zachary Drive here in Gray. Been there oh, 22 years now, I think. Yeah, 22 years. Beautiful place to be. And I've been watching, I'm a news junkie. I watch all kinds of news programs and read extensively the Town Hall stuff and all that. And that's what got me interested two years ago in running. And again, that's why I'm interested in running today to see what see what we can do here in Gray.
Now, people like myself may look at you and say, well, geez, you know, how are they qualified to be on the Town Council? Well, sorry, with Mike Bailey first, Mike, you know, what's your educational background that would allow you to do this if people ask you that question?
I have no educational background to come into this job. I'm just one of the citizens that's running for running for selectmen and to have a say or at least have the knowledge of what's going on in town more so than what I read from the emails and things such as that.
Thank you, Mike. Mike?
Yeah, so I graduated from University of Southern Maine here in the state with actually music and communications major. And Maine really captured my heart as well as the community is such a great place to live. And specifically here in Gray, we think, my husband and I, think it's a fantastic place to raise a family of any kind. And I think that education that I've had as well as being part of student government for a long time gives me the ability to listen, gives me the ability to compromise, and gives me the ability to hopefully get the jobs done that I know I can in the time of the era. I do work for a fiber company here, so I'm very tech forward. I understand the importance of communication and technology throughout the state. I think that's another area of opportunity that we have here in the town is to make sure everyone's connected. And hopefully the expertise I can bring back to the council and maybe help shore up the technology portion of the town as well.
Okay. Now, one of the biggest things that Town Councils do, and everybody in small towns such as Gray keeps an eye on it, they keep an eye on their property taxes, which generate the means for the town to do things, be it school budget or highways or whatever it might be, you know, public safety especially, you know, high budget item. And in doing so, making any type of budget, they get to a set amount, and if it's over a set amount of money, LD1 kicks in, which is a limit on how much the town can raise property taxes. Starting with Mike Curtis, Michael, what would be your position on LD1?
So I think LD1, you know, we have to do it, or we have to look at the property taxes and discuss it in a roundabout way. Because I've seen other towns within the state implement the rise in property taxes, making it devastating to your average citizen. I think that if we come up with a plan and move it forward, that's beneficial for everyone. We can hopefully, you know, get both sides, get what we need from the taxes, but at the same time, not dip into everyone's pocketbook so much so it's devastating to them, you know, because especially with inflation and prices rising, the extra 50 or 100 bucks out of someone's paycheck can really do some damage, so.
Thank you. Mike Bailey?
As far as I know, it's a control how much you can raise property taxes. Am I correct on that?
That's correct.
Yeah. And that's a good idea, the state mandating it, because you, in Gray, you have to have, you have to have a balance, but you can't go borrow all kinds of money every year to run your basic budget. And property taxes in Gray are mostly fair. There was a few years back where they went a little little skewer, but they've come down since then. And I agree with what you say, you have to pay for certain things. I was reading through the budget the other day. One of your fellows, one of the councilors I've been in touch with told me that there's an awful lot of moving parts. And oh my God, yes, there is. It's very complicated to read through, but very interesting. Yes, you better check.
Now, if the budget, which the town voters will vote on June 14th, the same time they're voting for our next Town Council person, if that budget exceeds the 1% increase in taxes and the people vote the referendum, will you support the referendum question, no matter which way it goes, without bringing something back to the council and saying, we need to overturn this, we need to move forward anyway? And we'll start with Mr. Bailey, Mike Bailey.
Yeah, I would respect the vote and how it turned out. If I could win Town Council, that would be my job to accept that vote as it came, whether or not I agree with it or not.
And Mike Curtis?
It's the people's voice, and we're here to represent the people. So I will do whatever the consensus is across board.
Thank you. Another question submitted via email from Kyle is that being on the Town Council means you will undoubtedly come across people with views other than your own. How do you navigate this kind of conflict or what's your method of conflict management that will create harmony as opposed to discord amongst the council, whether it be in the building or outside of the building? And we'll start with Mr. Curtis, Mike Curtis.
So my answer to that question is one word, which I don't think a lot of people do or are using in today's climate. That's compromise. That's it to the T. It's compromise. You're never going to get everything that you want, and you will not see eye to eye on things that other people want, but with listening, with respect, and listening to a majority, and the ability to compromise if you can get to where you need to go.
Okay, Mr. Bailey?
One of the few things my parents taught us when we were growing up is to always read, always ask, always get involved. They were, I think my father was a Democrat, but my mother was always a stout Republican out of Pennsylvania. And that's what they taught us to start from, you want compromise. What the hell happened to that? We can't seem to get along in this world today. It's very sad because we should be able to agree to disagree. We have a problem here. Let's look at it. Let's take it, fix it. Is it the way you want it? Maybe the way I want it, or maybe the way I want it, maybe it's the way you want it. It has to be that way.
I agree, and I think it's about also empathy, sympathy, and respect, which I feel like is lacking on the fringes of today's political society. And I don't think, you know, people are bringing it to the center of it is to live in order to be pragmatic and move forward. So I think with that tool set, you have a very successful year and hopefully move forward as quickly as possible.
Mr. Bailey, anything else on that, or we all said?
No, I think you told it right in.
Okay. Now, Mr. Bailey, his comment, Mr. Bailey, his answer that made reference to his father being a Democrat in England, his mother being a stout Republican.
Well, my mother told me when I was only a Democrat, she wrote it for us, John, get it.
Which actually, which actually leads us into a question that that Cheryl submitted, not Cheryl, hold on just for a second. That Christine submitted, and from both Democrats, please, both Democrats, both candidates, please, do you identify as a Democrat or a Republican? And we'll start with Mike Bailey.
I just haven't either. Both the major parties in this country have done more to hurt us than to help us. There's nothing getting done with the major parties in this state as well. Nationally, of course, it's just, that's just a nightmare. I'm not Democrat or Republican. I'm not going to say I'm going to be what you want me to be because I'm not a Democrat either. But I'm going to talk to you, listen to you, see where it goes, work with the fellow councilors, see if we have some sort of consensus on whatever it might be. A little town of Gray here, we're not going to, I don't think we're going to run into something like that. It has to be that bad because we don't seem to get along here.
And Mike Curtis?
So I like to think of my grandfather when I think about figuring out where I lie in the political spectrum. And the he was very smart and he was very, very Democratic, but he was fiscally conservative. And he was socially liberal. So I guess that's the best explanation for me. I will say I'm a full-blown Democrat. And the reason for that is my viewpoints as a man, as a man married to a woman, and line up very clearly with my viewpoints. And the reasoning for that is, I think, for a long time, political parties have been unchecked. And what I mean by that is there is a big issue with money in politics at the end of the day. So you can be a Republican or you can be a Democrat, but the root of all evil is that money in politics because it's no longer the beckoning of the voice of the people. It's the beckoning of the paycheck. And if we could demonstrosize that and get rid of that, I feel like we can get back to my grandfather's political views where it is okay to be, you know, liberal in social aspects, and it's okay to be conservative financially and not have to pick and choose one or the other. So it's doable because it's been done in the past. I feel like if we kind of redesign that, we can move forward hopefully with compromise.
So you think national Democratic, I don't want to say Democrat, national political party platforms should have an influence on what happens here in the town of Gray?
Should be the other way. You should flip that on its head. So I think local politics, state politics should have a reflection on a national level, not the other way around.
And Mr. Bailey?
That's what we used to say back in the day, you know, let's change the world. If you don't change the world, let's start with my little corner and go from there. I don't think I agree with that. Well, yeah, what they do nationally definitely is going to affect us. There's no doubt about that. And what's coming is going to be it's, and that's where it is, it starts here. And then you, it goes up, it goes up through there. I think we have a pretty neat state government. I think we've had one for, well, mostly the last several years, but I see, I think I got started there again.
Okay, but now locally speaking, we have a question submitted by Cheryl. And as many people know, in the town of Gray, whether they read the Lakes Region Weekly or the Greater Gloucester Community Bulletin Board on Facebook, you may have seen this, but on the North Raymond Road, there was a contract application submitted to the town by a developer that proposes 643 single-family retirement homes. Much of it is in the critical rural zone, and it's very close to Crystal Lake, which is an endangered lake. And North Raymond Road is not the best traffic road in the world. I'll be at the intersection. It's pretty nice now, North Raymond Road and 26. Well, that's true, I know. Do you think we should move forward with that? I mean, do you think that's a good project for the town of Gray? And let's start with Mike Curtis.
Yeah, so I hate halting progress. I hate halting growth. But there has to be a smart way to do it. And the location that you're specifically talking about is already at a critical state. I know my family and I visit Crystal Lake every summer. It's beautiful. It's our favorite spot. But was it five or maybe three, four times a year, sometimes I shut down due to bacteria in the lake already. So proposing units, or that many units so close to already a stressed environment is not a good idea. I mean, we could compromise. See, there's other places within the town that might work, but that specific area is definitely an open lane.
And Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, I've been kind of reading about that and talking to people about that. One of the people, I didn't realize it was 600. That's you got to look at it. First question I would ask is, is Town Water, does that go out that far? And if it does, can it support that sort of growth? If it can't, then something has to be done. And then there's also the sewer drawn off. You have to look at what's going to happen, what the impact is going to be. Not today, but 10 years down the road. You can't say, okay, we're going to build three, 600 houses. Everybody's going to be happy here. We'll have a place to live. Who's going to clean up that mess if we don't look at that first? And that's what we should look at first. Whether or not I agree with it, I have no idea. That would have to be as far as whatever zoning rules are here in Gray. The little knowledge I have, I don't think the zoning, zoning in Gray would allow it. I don't think we'll, there's welllands under there.
This will go back to an earlier question, though, if, if all of a sudden the ordinance review committee, for example, or the planning board supported such a project which is in conflict with the local ordinance, which, what would your position be? Or if the Town Council wanted to change the ordinance to allow that growth? Which way do we go?
I, I will hold firm. I'll voice my opinion and vote, and beware of the consensus among the committee we would have to go with, but my personal belief would still be.
And Mr. Bailey?
If the planning board approves that, and they're saying that there's not enough infrastructure there to support it, then you would, you would have to go, no, I mean, if you, again, you can't think about next week, next month. You have to think about 10 years down the road, building structures such as. I think we should do more of that in Gray, yes. I don't know where, I don't know if that's an inclusive wetland or inclusive, but there's a stream up in there. And they want to build a road up into, up into the back of Olivia Hill, I believe, up back to high school.
And I can personally vouch that when getting signatures, I spoke with a bunch of the folks around the lake. And it's a big concern, it's a big concern because the traffic in Gray is already crazy, especially down that way. Then adding that many units and that much traffic to that area, I think is, you know, what are we planning for that? We have to look at the specifics on that. But like I said, if there's a way to maybe have an option B, maybe, you know, shrink the amount of units that are accessible or, you know, look at the zoning, like you said, be a little more specific with it, then maybe there's a possibility for it. But at this point in time, I don't think that not even the ecosystem over there, but the community, can you handle that many cars?
Mr. Bailey, anything else?
Yeah, like you said earlier about when I asked you about that, I asked you about the law that was just passed today about the zoning changes. The state has made, and we're going to have to, like you said, look at that in the, in the view of the zoning board report that I left my tongue on, the zoning board of appeals. I have to look at it that way and see what are the rules here in Gray, and how does that impact the state, the state thing? How does that impact that as well? If it comes to the desk and, you know, it's all good and everything's going to work, but I just, I just, I don't, I don't think so. I don't know. But I'd like to say, I don't, I don't want to see that sort of growth in one spot. The traffic there, we can do, we can do that sort of thing in Gray. We can do it differently. We can, we've got all kinds of places, like a farm that across the street from my house and your house. And in that area, we have done five acres. There's no room for three or four houses up there. Go for it.
Thank you very much. Now, that concludes the email questions that we received. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to pose a question to our candidates? Mrs. Monroe, if you could go to the podium, please, so people at home can hear you. Are you familiar with the podium? Come on, Fred.
Okay, so I have a question for somebody else that asked me to ask the question. And he wanted to know if you felt that the Texas and Gray affair, I guess Ms. Bailey did already respond to that, but I'm waiting for Curtis.
Yeah, I think right now they're pretty darn good across the board from what I've seen across the state. Can we do better? Yes, but I think they're okay for now. If they started to rise, then we might have to look at that, but I think they're all right.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience? Yes, ma'am. And your first name, please?
Lacey Ankinson. So I'm on the Economic Development Committee, and I was on the comp plan. What do you see are some of the things that Gray could do better to attract businesses, to therefore lower the taxes and improve the services that Gray offers its residents?
Let's start, let's start with Mr. Curtis.
So A, I think it's a great spot, central location for business development. And I think with the zoning board, there are specific areas that maybe are underutilized now that we could rezone for more business growth, right? I also think the revitalization of the town center is going to attract a lot more folks to the area, not only businesses, but families as well. I really think once we get the hold of that, we'll have a centralized place for community. And I think that's another thing that's missing a little bit in the town is I wish we had that one centralized, you know, community place where we could go off the dog, meet people, and I think the revitalization of the town center will help with that. And the rezoning maybe of some of the current zoning that we have might help with the business development as well. And possibly maybe tax breaks for the businesses that do come, that would like to come to the town.
Mr. Bailey?
Well, I do agree with some sort of, you're talking about the TIF district. I was a little miffed at the time, and I'm sorry if this is prejudicial because I worked, I worked there. The TIF district that they developed that went down south towards 100, the only one as far as the border of it is the ice cream shop. Why didn't they include the whole shopping center in there? We've had, we have several empty storefronts in there, more and more opening up every, every day. And what we can do to attract? You gotta have housing. You gotta, we don't have housing. I have friends that have been looking for, looking for a place for eight months. They can't find one, can't find one even close. And that's, that's a critical part. That's a critical thing today, and that's not, that's not just here. That's everywhere. And we, that has to come first because people, for 20 years, I drove back and forth to Portland. I didn't hate it, but always felt good, you know? Nice little town. Our taxes seem to be right. I like to complain about a lot of things, so, but I won't. Just, you got in the business, I let's fill up what we have because you have empty stuffs out there. Yeah. And like you said, you want a place to walk the dog. Gray has always been a rural town all through its history, if you look at. It's just been that clump of roads that come together in one place. And we built up around that, and that's accidental. I like that I wasn't aware of that. The first long known United States was Gray or Gray. So we have, we have, we have promise here. We have promise here, but the answer is our, I need to be educated.
Why would a business move here currently in the next few years before the revitalization and before all this housing? What would you say to them if you met them on the street to say, why come to Gray now?
I think because the opportunity to move is here, and, you know, I'll go back to my first answer. It's just so centrally located in the city. And it's easy to get to right off the highway. You have Entercon right in that business park. And those employees get right there, right next to the parking lot. So I think centrally located is fantastic. I also, again, I think recreational, bringing the people here. You gotta, you gotta entice your employees, right? So if a company is going to move to Gray, why would they move to Gray? And what do their employees get out of working here in the town? And bike paths, accessibility to the outdoors, we're right next to the lake region. I think all those, all those options and that criteria really benefits a business from moving in. And we should take a look at the taxes, but I think great tax break would entice some of the folks or some of the businesses to move here. And we do have, you know, some unused space, like you were saying. Why not revitalize those spaces? The strip mall within, next to China Gray, I think is a great option, you know? Or maybe delegate some land and some money for business revitalization. What can, with them, what's in it, what's in it for the business and what will be in it for the town? We can come to an understanding on that with a great benefits package for those companies that bring their businesses here. Not only will it help with the growth, it will help with the taxes. And I feel like it could be a destination, community, not only to live, but to come visit as well.
And this goes to a question, Mr. Bailey, that a person actually emailed in for you. It says that your campaign signs indicate that you'll provide jobs for Gray residents. And with the number of job opportunities that are posted in people's windows, online, just about everywhere, how can you try to make sure that job opportunities will be there for people in Gray? I mean, they don't seem to be taking them now. So how do you do that? And I'll ask Mr. Curtis to follow up and answer that same question.
I have been waiting so long for somebody to ask me that. I take a little bit of lightness into it. It's a joke, actually. Because back in the days, politicians would always offer you these things, a chicken at every job. This is it's no politician can create a job for you to go to. It's never been that way. And why people even think it is that way, I just don't understand. And the joke around where I work is, oh, yeah, you've got a whole job here. That's the funny part. Because I can't, I can't do anything here to create jobs. We only do the policies that make it, like you, Michael, you said, a person coming into town. She asked about somebody coming into town and starting a business. Cool. Welcome to Gray. I hope it works for you. And a joke, one of my favorite jokes is, it's not all Lewiston and Portland. There's a little gray in between. And we're, we are, well, let's, let's realize it. We're a bedroom community to those two places. Have you been, have you been on these roads, going to these two places during the community times? I mean, I'm sure people are coming to Gray. We got Entercon over there to come to Gray. And yes, we're never going to become a Lewiston. We're never going to become a Whore. We're always going to be a little gray in between. And that's, that's what I like. We can, we can increase growth and increase business and do it on a slow and thing, slow, easy, and do it right.
Okay, Mr. Curtis, do you have anything else you wanted to add in previous comments or?
Um, no, I just really think there's great opportunity here for the town, and we have to balance growth, but we also have to, you know, keep the quaintness of the town at large, right? But why not let Gray cash in on the opportunity of business growth? Why not have it be a place where people do want to work? And how do we get to that solution? How do you, how do we make it attractive for folks, not just to live here, but to visit here, to increase the business activity, you know? to increase the business activity, you know? Um, and again, it goes back to her question with being an employee at, uh, a place of employment. What, what keeps employees out of company? You know, they're heard, um, you know, a CEO might have great pay. Um, benefits are fantastic, so those are the kind of things we can look at and bring to the development to make it a destination town, really. And I mean, look at, look at, uh, Wyndham or look at Moore, right? Wyndham is like the destination today, everything's there, right? And I sometimes find myself going to Wyndham to pick up stuff instead of having it be here in Gray. And I, I'll look at my husband sometimes and be like, you know what? That restaurant was really great. Why can't we have something like that in Gray? And then the opportunity's there, like the destination restaurant. You know, we've got, um, tons of building space that we can use for, um, tech companies, you know? For example, in, in, we can't really do much without technology nowadays. So I think if, if we kind of combine that, have the technology in place, um, have those, you know, those benefits in place for the companies to move here, that we can do both. I think we can bring new businesses here, grow, bring down the taxes, but at the same time, have it still be great.
Pretty sad, mentioned about decent restaurants in here. We had a good restaurant here.
Oh, yeah.
They just moved to Wyndham.
Yeah. They did.
They have trails nails.
Yep. Now, that would be a great autopsy to look at, why? Why, why did, why did that, why did that happen? And that's, that's a discussion for the day. But, you know, retention, how do we keep them here? Why did they move to Wyndham?
Yeah, I don't think anything that happened here, anything.
No, I, but who knows? Was it the brand, was it, you know, the taxes?
More business, more people in Wyndham.
The location, you know, the location too, it is a little far out. But, you know, again, we're right off the highway, the, all that space we did develop.
How many years, so, how many years was Coal Farms a destination?
Oh, it was great.
Before I, before I moved to town, that was like maybe.
My, my wife grew up here, she's been in this town for over forty years and she can't remember when Coal Farms wasn't there. What about?
Now, that being said, Chris, do we have anything from Facebook chat?
Do, we have to.
This is Chris, our capable questioner, and she's gonna, uh, give us some questions from Facebook that were submitted. Anyways.
Yeah, please. Came through, uh, via our Zoom chat, the folks are watching live. So, um, one of them is from, uh, Mark Grover. He asks, are there any particular initiatives that you hope to sponsor or advocate for in the town of Gray? Or are there things that bother you that you wish to see changed in Gray or specifically in its government?
And we'll start with Mr., Mr. Bailey.
Um, hit me, hit me with my question again, please. I'm sorry.
There are two, really. Are there any particular initiatives that you personally would be sponsoring or advocating for if you were to be on the council?
Um, uh, near to my heart, I guess. Um, the town of Gray, actually, uh, I, I, I personally think the town of Gray actually moved up when a, me and marijuana illegal in the town. Any sales or growth thereof, I think they missed the boat on that. And, uh, I don't think it's gonna change, but I would really like to see that part change.
Otherwise, you know, I guess, not many, not very many things with these people.
You wanna break it up that way?
Yeah, yeah. Seems like I'm meant to see if I can mess it up.
Yeah.
There, there was a part two to that question.
Yes, if you wanna, wanna focus on that one too, I guess, if you wanna stay, stay with you. What are the things that bother you that you wish to see changed in Gray or its government, you're saying?
Yeah, I, that's why I'm running.
Yeah.
Maybe see the little, little bit of change right here in the government. Help, uh, help everybody out. I don't know if the citizens actually do have a voice completely on, on, on it, because I don't know what kind of audiences you have here for, uh, for the meetings. I know there's a lot of people involved and surprised that somebody who hasn't been involved is, is in crime. Two years ago, that, that's, that's what I went up against, two incumbents.
Yeah. Right, I want to direct that to you, Mr. Curtis. The, are there any particular initiatives that you would personally sponsor, advocate? Start with that one.
Yeah, so I do love the idea of making it legal, uh, for marijuana here in the, in town. I mean, Wyndham's got twenty, thirty different dispensaries and, you know, that's tax revenue for the town, right? So I think that's an area opportunity, I agree with that. I also think, um, the other two issues that are really dear to my heart, which I think is in motion, reading the comp plan is that revitalization of the town center. I think that's gonna be great, um, for development. I also think, um, lack of sidewalks, which sounds really weird. Um, at some places, you know, it's, it's kind of hard, like on our road, for example, um, on Todd Road, um, there's more and more people moving in, right? And, uh, more houses are being purchased and more bodies are moving into the area. Um, but they're still walking on the dirt on the side of the road with traffic coming in both directions. And it can be a little dangerous. So I think maybe you'll look at, um, sidewalks for the town might be helpful for us to get from point A to point B a little, a little quicker. And revitalization of the, uh, of the town center, I think it's gonna be possible. Those are my two favorites. And then, um, I agree with him about the dispensaries for, well, something we can change in the government.
Right, and part two, the, any things that bother you or that you'd wanna see changed in the town or the government specifically?
So, no, I, I mean, I can't really speak to that educatively because, um, you know, this is my first go at, you know, public office. So I, I don't know the dynamics that well, so I can't really speak to it. Um, but on personal note, I think, you know, um, making sure we keep the taxes where they're at maybe is important, but I don't have a specific rep against it, so.
We have, we have one other, uh, gentleman who put in, I believe, who put in a question. Um, I don't know if you can answer this, but I might need to have a wider discussion. He had asked, how much land has been set aside for the main state game preserve for future use? I was referencing the solar panels that were put up in the, in the game reserve. Don't expect you to know exactly how, how much land has been set aside, but, uh, if you do, great. Um, but it might, might be a good chance to, to speak to solar development. Uh, it is up to the council to approve solar zoning, um, if you wanna speak to.
Yeah, I, I think it's fantastic. I mean, I can personally speak for our family. Um, we made the investments for solar, um, at, at our residence. And I think it's, uh, very smart, uh, considering the pricing of, uh, electricity and, um, these non-renewable resources. Um, I am a big advocate of, uh, going as clean as possible. Um, I do believe that, uh, climate change is real and anything we can do at a town level, at a personal level, to help offset that as quick as possible, I think should and, and should be done in pretty drastically quickly. So I'm a big believer in renewable energy. I love solar, it's great to do that. You should continue it.
I'm just gonna add to his, I, I agree, I agree with solar. Uh, did you say that they're gonna put panels in the, in the, uh, the bar right there?
Uh, this person who was questioning was asking about the main state game preserve. I, I believe you might be referencing the one on the highway that used to be a.
That little intersection?
Yeah, that used to be a preserve and now it has.
I'm not familiar with it. I'm not familiar with it, but I, I think it's good.
I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm with him as far as solar goes, yes, of course. Um, some people will say the ugly look at that stuff along the, uh, on the bypass. But it's necessary.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Okay, I think those were only two that had come in via Zoom.
Thank you very much. Does any, uh, again, another chance for the audience, anybody? Mrs. Monroe?
One aspect of retaining, um, or creating, um, businesses in, in this area would be, um, the, um, public transportation system. Uh, how high would you advocate for us to have public transportation? There was a time when Greyhound did come and pick you up at the corner down here to take you down to the airport and, and all that. I thought that was fantastic. Those of us who travel, it would be great to be able to leave our cars at home and, you know, and, and all of that. But aside from that, for people to work, um, you know, to come to this area, um, there are maps and trails and all that in other towns, but not here in Gray. Um, also, you know, businesses have to be created within the business owner and not the government. So I firmly don't believe it's our responsibility, but we can make opportunity for, um, um, businesses to be able to be created in this town, especially transportation. So, um, how high, and, and twenty, about twenty-five years ago, we were promised, excuse me, senior citizens were promised a, um, bus. It's twenty-five years, we still don't, yeah, they still don't have a bus. And, no. Um, but anyway, you know, um, you know, that, so no one's trying real hard. And, um, maybe that's some of our problem. And where would you stand on working to get that to happen?
Great question.
Both of you.
Yeah, great question. Um, just like technology, you know, connectivity is important and transportation is highly important. There's only so many Ubers that can go around, but I'm sure you all know in this area, it's pretty difficult to get an Uber to the airport. You know, we, we're not as, uh, as populated as Portland, but also, again, we're so centralized in the state that, you know, even using the parking ride, for example, you know, getting some discounts on, on group transportation from a bus there, I think is a great idea. I think it's important and you are absolutely right because there are people out there that solely rely on public transportation and they're pigeonholes. They can't move, they can't row, they can't go to X, Y, and Z or they don't, they can't move to places they want to because they rely on their public transportation when they go so far. So I know they do have the bus line going from Portland to Lewiston, which is great. You know, and we're, we're right in between. Why not have the additional stop here? Already utilize the space we have, like the parking lot. Do maybe have, I don't know, maybe a bus stop there, put a little one. Um, and, and connect it, connect the town because it's not fair for those folks that don't have a car. It's not fair for, for seniors. You know, they're on a budget and I completely understand with my, with my ground, and it's not easy. And you shouldn't have to choose between, you know, your medication or doctor's appointment or getting to them, right? It should be available to do so. And I think that's a great idea and I would support at least a connection somewhere in the town, uh, to get you from point A to point C.
Mr. Bailey?
Um, I know that Amtrak's thinking about extending the line to Lewiston, but unfortunately, the towns in between are not included on that. Like, uh, I remember people told me about the old, uh, railroad used to come, the name's escaping me right now. That did stop in Lewiston, man, Gray, Yarmouth, all those towns along the way. Uh, I agree with Michael here that, uh, something should be done, uh, but the, the best route for that would be, uh, out of Portland, the bus, the bus companies that they, uh, the transit companies that they have, because they have a bus that goes all the way out to the lakes region, goes all, all the way out to Naples and back every day. And it's pretty cheap. And then, and I agree with you, I don't know why we can't get that to come here as well. Or even have a dedicated run that would come up through this way. They're, they, they gotta, they, they, they gotta be making money, that's, that's the sad part. And unfortunately, we, I don't know, would we utilize enough? I know you got promised a bus. I don't know what, what was, what that was all about. There was a town that was gonna provide a bus for the seniors to go, go places. Was it, huh, and they never did that, did it? Wonder what the reason was.
Okay, if there's nothing else, um, let's give both of our candidates, uh, and we'll start with Mr. Bailey this time, a chance to just, to, uh, make a closing statement as to, uh, why you should be elected to the Gray Town Council. Anything else that you'd like to address?
I went to college for June, um, um, broadcast journalism and I've driven a cab for forty years. And it's a wonderful way to make a living. Um, for me to be on the town councils, I think, is again, I'm gonna go back to, go back to that same thing. I'm not here for me. I'm not here for my ego, I'm not here to impress anyone. I'm here to do what the citizens want to have done. And I don't know if that's happening now, right now. As much as I read, I, not always, but sometimes. And that's, that's just, just a bit, vote for me, here I am. I wasn't out there last time. See if he, see if he messes me up.
Okay, Mr. Curtis?
So, uh, I'll start off by saying I've really fallen in love with this region and this town. And, uh, I think it's a fantastic community. And I myself, being younger, you know, there was twenty, thirty different options we could have gone, you know, to, look to move to. And I think what I keep on coming back to is the people here are awesome. Um, but I don't think, uh, everyone has an opportunity to, for example, transportation issue. Um, everyone should have a right to voice their opinion and, uh, live comfortably with, with the neighbors. And I think Gray is at a crossroads to implement growth with younger folks, such as myself. Make it attractive to come to the town. Um, but at the same time, let's, let's figure out how. And that's why I'm running for town council is to maybe be that vote between, to keep the tradition, but at the same time, let's utilize the growth and make sure we're giving everyone access to the things they need, you know? And, and let's focus on what is missing and tighten that up a bit. And I'd love to do my part to be the voice for not only people in my situation, but others.
Thank you very much. And, uh, thank you both, uh, for joining us tonight, uh, as we get to know the two candidates, uh, just a little bit better than we, uh, did before. And, uh, we want you, our viewers, to remember that the forum is available. If you wanna watch it again, it's available on, uh, Gray Community Television, Time Warner Spectrum Channel Two. It's also available on the Town of Gray's, uh, website under the Gray Community Television, uh, tab. We'd like to, um, remind you, please, to, uh, vote on election day, June fourteenth. And again, you can view the sample ballots, if you wanna view the sample ballots, uh, and other election information at, uh, graymain.org forward slash elections. That's all available for you tonight. So once again, thank you, Mr. Bailey, thank you, Mr. Curtis for being here. Uh, thank you, people from the town of Gray for viewing tonight. And again, you can watch, uh, on GCTV two, uh, later on on the website and replay the program. And thank you very much and good night.